Good evening, welcome to the annual joint meeting of the Pleasantville Village Board and the Pleasantville School Board. We're here at Village Hall this year, we alternate each other's houses so to speak. Today is October 19th, so if you're watching live, we invite you, as is the case at all Village Board meetings, to call in if you have a question or a concern at 769-1677, we'll be happy to address it. You can watch us on cable TV, as you may be doing right now, but also live on PCTV76.org through web screening. And I remind you, as I do at every meeting, that you can also watch a replay of this meeting on demand at PCTV76.org at some future date. But I caution you that if you're watching on a date other than October 19th, don't call 769-1677, or we won't answer. It's four to four Yankees-Angels in the top of the ninth, which based on the buzz so far is probably the most interesting thing that may happen tonight, but we will try to make it otherwise. So, I welcome you all here to Village Hall. Let me take the opportunity to mention, as I have at some points in the past, that we sit here at this elaborate new desk that was what might be described as an enforced gift by the New York State Office of Court Administration, which required us to have a so-called hardened bench for the court activities that happen in this room. And as a result, we are sitting here in unaccustomed grandeur, although we're trying to get accustomed to it. So, I don't know whether we should thank the Office of Court Administration, or ask evidence that they actually had the money to pay for it, but they paid us. Saul Skolnick, Board President, is here beside me.
Peter, thank you for inviting us. It's a pleasure to be here in your house, and we'd like to be the visiting team tonight.
That's a veiled Yankees reference, I assume.
Not so veiled.
This is because I'm not a Yankees fan, and I'm in the den of the enemy. Perhaps we should just work our way down the aisle and introduce ourselves, so that for the benefit of those who are used to watching one board or the other, everyone's been identified.
Steve Lopez, trustee.
Brian Skarstedt, trustee.
Jonathan Cunningham, trustee.
Peter Sherramera.
Saul Skolnick, President of the Board of Education.
Dave McCullough, Vice President of the Board of Education.
Tom Exton, Member of the Board.
Bill Altam.
Susan.
Lowell Finkler, Member of the Board.
Don Antonecki, Superintendent of Schools.
Patty Dwyer, Village Administrator.
So, here you have it, the entire government of the Village of Pleasantville and its environs, all in one place. We have an agenda here, and let me suggest, for the purposes of running a relatively efficient meeting, I'm going to suggest that we work our way through the agenda with the discussions we may have between the various boards, and then at the conclusion of that agenda, we invite anybody who may wish to call in, or members of the audience who have a question, an inquiry, a comment to make, we're welcoming you to the podium, and we'll stay here as long as we need to, to address those questions. But I think it'll be easier to save the questions for the end, rather than try to intersperse these various topics with questions that might be asked. Let me say at the outset, in my now, what, six months as Mayor, it has been a pleasure to work with the school district. Don Antonecki has been enormously helpful to me, and I hope we have found ways to be helpful to you all. I think that there is both a long tradition of cooperation between our two boards, but also great opportunities. We certainly find ourselves, I think, in both boards confronting some headwinds from Albany that will demand some creative thinking. But I also think, in addition to our local activities, perhaps there's some opportunities for some coordinated statement of policy and intent, because I think we both find ourselves confronted with situations in Albany that are not of our making, and have the potential to harm our community. So, that notion of a little legislative advocacy, I think, is a notion that I know Don is familiar with, in the context of his fellow superintendents, but I think maybe we need a little bit of a unified force to express the views about what we confront here in Pleasantville. So, the first item on our agenda was an update on Parkway Field and on the recreation center, and I invite anybody to chime in at any point with any comments they might have. But just for starters, let's talk about Parkway Field. As you may recall, at some of our past joint board meetings, we were in discussion with the county about a legacy grant, which was a program the county had established to supposedly to secure recreation facilities and open space for future generations. It, in effect, was a mechanism by which the city, the county, would fund certain kinds of field improvements, and in exchange for that, require certain steps on the part of the village, in our case, taking over county roads, and taking ownership of roads that are currently county responsibilities. At one point, there was also a discussion about incorporating affordable housing into a deal. I think that the board decided, after quite a bit of back and forth, that it was not a logical funding mechanism for us to go forward with. In essence, it's just an alternative means of funding the improvements that we talked about. At one point, we had put together a project that might have included an artificial turf field for the football field, substantial improvements to the fieldhouse, and completion of the lighting standards that are currently only partway around the field. That might have run up in the direction of the high three, or even four million dollars. The notion was that the county would conceivably pay all of that, and in exchange for that, require certain other steps. So, I think that issue has largely been put to bed, that the legacy program, at least as it was originally constructed, does not make sense for us, and we're not at the moment pursuing it. Our county legislator and former Mayor John Nona has let us know that smaller legacy grants may be available for much simpler projects without a quid pro quo, and, or at least without some of the most onerous aspects of the quid pro quo. And so that's something we certainly would consider. One of the issues that was a point of concern is that if the county sinks county money into our assets, into our field assets, they have certain rights of use, as do all county residents, since you can't use county money specifically for the benefit of a single community. So, that's something we'll be looking at, but by the same token, there's no evidence that the smaller legacy grant would be on the order of accomplishing the lighting or the field turf all by itself. So, I would say for the moment, our focus on Parkway Field is going to be on better maintenance, and Steve Johnson and his crew, Mario Sansoda, et cetera, have been working pretty hard on that. I know you guys have made some improvements to the fieldhouse, in an effort to make it more useful and more available for football games and the like. Another of the matters that's on the radar screen for us is the notion of providing permanent public bathrooms at Parkway Field. We've been able to take that step at Soldiers and Sailors, with a little building that will incorporate two bathrooms and storerooms, that we expect to have finished in the next couple of weeks, and will be open. But at the moment, we're still in the portolet business at Parkway Field. So, be interested to know where you guys stand about any use issues at Parkway Field, and any infrastructure issues that may or may not be on your radar screens.
Well, one thing that a subcommittee of the Village Trustees and a subcommittee of our board has been talking about, the fieldhouse and the use, as you well know, there's an agreement that goes back into the early '70s, I believe.
Punish.
Never been updated, and so we've been discussing how to update that, and looking at a number of the different issues as well. So, we're, let me fall on my sword, we're a little behind on that, because I've been holding it up a little bit with a couple of issues, but we hope to get that back in gear in the upcoming couple of weeks.
Great.
Do you have anything to add?
No, I think it's about time we went through that, because it is a very old agreement, and it encompasses more than just Parkway, and I think we'll be able to make some progress.
Sounds good. The next item on our agenda was the...
Yeah, maybe just a quick note on the fields and rec. People who have involved in our recreation program over the last year realize that there is a rec fee that Don has been applying to each of the rec programs that they now enroll their children into, which is dedicated completely towards upgrading our rec facilities, and in part has been applied to the brick-and-mortar building that is now at Soldiers and Sailors' Field, hopefully to be opened. Well, I don't know if it's going to get open actually for this season, but certainly for the spring, so it is an example of how we're actually trying to take those monies and actually apply them in a much-needed capacity.
And it's worth noting that we certainly view ourselves as confronting a very constrained economic position, and as a result, the fields fee that Jonathan mentioned is just one example where a modest user fee will allow us to respond faster to some of the requests that community members may wish to see in terms of improvements in various different kinds of programs. But in addition to that, the nice aspect of that fee is that parents whose kids are involved are paying it only while their kids are involved, and at the point at which their kids are no longer involved, they're not responsible for it. So, there certainly is a baseline, general tax support responsibility for recreation, but this is a means by which we can make some significant improvements and do it more quickly. So, the recreation center, just to let you know, is, as you know, we moved out of the building that is at the corner of Great Oak Lane and Bedford Road, and we're in the process, indeed within a week or so of the deadline, for responses to an RFP to sell it, potentially sell it to a private owner. We haven't made any commitment to sell it, but if we're able to achieve an agreement with a potential buyer at a reasonable price and for a reasonable use, we are of the view at the moment that we don't have an awful lot of choice but to sell it, because the building itself needs quite a bit of repair. It remains, however possible, that we might end up keeping it and adaptively reusing it. But at the moment, we have a small contract with Lothrup Associates Architects, working through our Parks and Rec Advisory Board, to do some preliminary surveys about possible locations and possible buildings that could be built to create a new recreation center. As mentioned, it's not clear in the current economic environment what might be realistic as far as actually moving ahead with that, but what is clear is that it's certainly an appropriate time to be doing planning and thinking about what we might end up with. Discussions have ranged from modest building that would incorporate offices and storage, to the possibility of having multipurpose rooms that could be used not only for modest indoor sports activities, but for parties and teen groups and kids' events and the like. And at the grandest iteration, the potential notion of a building that would incorporate significant sporting facilities, including the possibility of a gym. Lothrup is going to be looking at several different sites, sort of back-of-the-napkin sketches, to help us identify what the various sites that we already own might accommodate, and also to help us identify what it might cost at these various levels. So, sort of cost-per-square-foot analysis, sort of top-level analysis that would suggest, okay, a building that fulfills only your minimum programmatic requirements might cost X, and as you add bells and whistles, the cost might mount in X, Y, Z way. So, part of that effort involves a community outreach effort and some programming with community members, and we certainly will look for input from all of you about what aspects of a rec center are valued, and who's most interested in seeing what happens. So, that will be working its way forward over the next several months, and we'll see where we end up on that front. In the meantime, as you know, the rec department is operating on the third floor Village Hall, and rec programs have been sort of distributed in multiple different places, with some of them happening in this room, some at the Clinton Street Center, some in various different places. I think that has all been working pretty well, but there isn't any question that the rec program is constrained by a lack of facilities at the moment. So, in that context, I might add that Linda Belafaro reports that this year's day camp in the summer was an enormous success, and that was housed this year at Bedford Road School because of the construction going on elsewhere.
Correct. And we'll be doing the same this summer, because we still anticipate that there's going to be work done at the high school with the current project, and the Excel project, there will be some summer work entailed with that at the middle school. So, we're happy that it worked real well. We also have to do it again this summer.
As are we. I think the this year's camp enrollment was higher than usual, it may be, was a good bang-for-the-buck program in a little bit of a down economy, but Linda reported that it all went very smoothly, and much thanks to all of you for having pivoted to a different school, given what's going on in your main, in your high school and middle school campus, so that worked out very well. And I gather that the after-school programs are, in many cases, oversubscribed to the degree that we had to have a lottery who got into some of these programs. So, all that is happy news to be reporting, and very good evidence of that cooperation between our two entities. Item two on our discussion was anticipated development. It's obviously of interest to the school district to know what might be happening that could potentially affect the tax base pro or con, and also what might be happening that could potentially introduce new housing that would generate new kids. And there are a couple of points to be made. As you know, we re-zoned Marble Avenue after an extended process a couple of years ago, and made a number of changes in how Marble Avenue is zoned, including taking the first hundred feet of properties in the area of the football fields and beyond, and turning them into a residence and professional office zone that would permit potential redevelopment for residential use mixed with offices. A number of those uses, we have a contractor's yard and things of that kind along there, in what were once residences, and what we'd like to see over the long haul is for those to turn back into more of a mixed-use kind of mix of residence and professional offices, but get rid of some of the uses that feel a little less compatible, like storage yards and the like. So, we'll see how that goes, but in the midst of that, we have also, I think, shaken loose some action with the Stop &amp; Shop Company, which has owned the MLA site for now nine years. The property has been vacant for ten. MLA has been owned by the Stop &amp; Shop Company for all that period of time, and I made a pilgrimage to their headquarters in Quincy, Massachusetts, and then a couple of weeks later, they came here and visited with Patty Dwyer and with me, and they are in the process right now of making some modest improvements to the building in order to make it showable. It has been in disrepair, there are some mold issues, et cetera, that mean that they can't be trooping people through it. Soon as that's done, and indeed, I think it may be just about done, it will be actively on the market, and they'll be seeking a new buyer for it. So, I would caution you that although I think that is consummation devoutly to be wished, it obviously presents some risk to us, which is to say, it may be that the building is purchased by someone who intends to populate it roughly as is, it might be occupied by an entity that wants to add to it, it might be purchased by someone who wants to knock it down and do something entirely different. We have made clear to Stop &amp; Shop that we have a number of interests and concerns, and one of them is the parking lot that is actually owned by MLA, but which is adjacent to the football and soccer fields. Community members may not be aware of it, since we routinely park there on afternoons and on weekends, that that is not village land, it has always been used by the village in a sort of a cooperative arrangement, first with MLA and since with Stop &amp; Shop, at times that they didn't need it. You might recall that the dance we had with Trico over a housing project there had worked its way to the point that they had offered to give us that piece of property, so we would have gained title to it. But Trico has disappeared into the mists of time. So, we've certainly made clear to Stop &amp; Shop that we have a number of key interests that come into play in that area, and would be seeking a cooperative involvement with them, and they've agreed that we're going to have our standing conference call every couple of weeks with their brokers, First Service Williams out of Stamford, Connecticut. I, anybody who knows anybody who is interested in 115,000 square feet, plenty of room for a few bedrooms and bathrooms, should call First Service Williams in Stamford, Connecticut. So, that's the status of that. I'm happy to report that First Service indicates that they've already gotten quite a number of expenses of interest. How serious that turns out to be, I don't know. Stay tuned. The next thing to note is a matter that we have very little solid information about, and that is, as you probably already know, the county recently entered into a consent agreement with the Fed's Department of Housing and redevelopment regarding an affordable housing settlement, and it will require the county to invest something like $60 million in affordable housing, and to generate 750 units of affordable housing over the next seven years. The communities that are identified as possible sites for that are communities that meet certain standards, a less than 7% Hispanic population, less than 3% African-American population, based on the 2000 census. So, Pleasantville is one of, how many communities are on the list, Patty?
Twenty-six. Thirty-one.
Thirty-one communities in Westchester are on the list as potential sites for this housing. At the moment, the county, I think it's fair to say, has given none of us any clarity about how they intend to choose sites, what the sites might be, whether the desire to establish these units will be more about carrots than sticks. Very hard to say, any of the above, but it's certainly important to realize that we are on the list as a potential site, and it is unclear at the moment whether Pleasantville would factor into their plans or not. So, we'll certainly keep you up to date on that front. And on our regular meeting agenda tonight, if you care to stay, or if you want to catch it on PCTV76.org, Rich Lampert, who's a village resident, is going to make a presentation to us about a project that he has suggested, that the village board has heard about for the first time a few weeks ago, and will be hearing more about tonight, to develop a workforce housing project on the parking lot behind Lucy's Lounge, in essence, a building rather similar to the Ashburn Hall project. That's a project that we have not, was generated as an idea by Rich. The village board has heard the general story about it, but will be finding out more detail tonight. We certainly have not committed to doing it or participating in it, but it's an interesting project that I recommend you either stay tonight or catch up with it on the web thereafter to find out what might be proposed there. One of the questions, obviously, is that that project now may be seen at a different light, given the county settlement, from the discussion that we had with Rich a few months ago before that was known, and so that would obviously factor into our consideration of it as well. There are a few other positive development signs on the horizon. We've got a new owner at the building with Pleasantville Pizza in it. As you may have seen, it's been power washed, and they're scaffolding up, and Brian Skarstedt's office hallway is being gussied up. So, that building had been owned by a single owner for a very long time, and it has now been purchased, and the new owner intends to make a significant investment in it, upgrade that building significantly, so that will be a very positive addition to the downtown. And we've got a couple of other projects that will produce some new activity downtown as well. The owner of Lucy's Lounge is, I think, at the finish line at this point in the approvals process for an addition on the back of Lucy's Lounge that would incorporate a two-story area with a restaurant and a party room, so that Lucy's would have a restaurant slash sort of bar food operation, and expand what has become quite a happening music scene at night. So, that is another nice addition to our local commercial base. And as you may also be aware, over the last nine months or so, a big volunteer committee led by Peter Eschweiler, Peter Russell, and Steve Lopez, in his role before he joined the village board, looking at the central business district and thinking about various ways in which we could sort of tee up a better future for it. I think the shorthand version of it is to suggest that if we're serious about seeing some underdeveloped properties turn to a more productive use, a vision from the village that would allow a developer to sort of come in and say, I get it, you guys have already ratified a sort of framework of development that interests you, we can start a project at second base, recognizing that we already know what you don't want and what you do want in a given precinct. So, I think we're pretty serious about that. We had an interesting meeting with them last week, and are, I think, at the point where within a short period of time, we'll be vetting a bigger plan with the community at large, and working towards the possibility of engaging some professional assistants in not only determining what the economic impact might be, writing the zoning that might make it happen, but starting to do some outreach to developers. It's interesting to note that although it's a funny time for investment, I do think that reading the tea leaves would suggest that our community is well situated in a world that will be increasingly interested in smart growth. We have a lot of assets that a lot of communities wish they had, a downtown with a train station right in the middle, a close-knit community with schools and library and churches close to one another, a cultural anchor in the form of the Jacob Burns and its new media center. So, there are an awful lot of developers out there who are not quite sure where they're going to get money in the coming years, but as soon as it loosens up a little bit, I do feel as though we have an opportunity here to attract some significant interest. So, we'll keep you up to date on that front. One interesting piece of that downtown development proposal is that it presages a rethinking of Memorial Plaza that would provide quite a nice green space and a real sort of almost New England-style village green in the Village of Pleasantville. So, obviously, we have to figure out where the cars that were there would end up, but you've got to start with a vision instead of resources when you're ready to do it. If any of you would like to contribute your driveway for extra parking. Item three on our list was the cable franchise negotiation.
Peter, I'm sorry, before we get off, I just said, it's not a downtown issue, but I drive down Sarrows Lane each day, and I go past, you know, that warehouse that, I don't know if you have any knowledge on this, but it's been dormant for, it looks like they started to tear it down, and I thought they were going to be putting up some new housing, and it's been dormant for quite some time.
And I think all of the above is true. My belief, and I haven't talked to Mike about this in the last couple of months, is that the project obviously ran afoul of a weakened residential market. Patty, are you aware of any more current?
I don't know what's happening up there. Or at the old Pierce property on 117.
Nothing.
Right, all the, no.
Trust me.
Quiet in the backyard.
Financing for new construction, as you all know, is pretty much disappear off the radar. Almost all the new development projects, there are a tremendous number around the metro area that are half-built or still on the drawing boards, but as soon as that source of funding, construction funding loosens up, I imagine a lot of these will begin to move forward again. People can't get mortgages, and contractors can't get the money to get their projects going. So, there seems to be quite a bit of money, though, somewhere north of, was it 500 billion, that's happened, put aside for bonuses this year by some of the major banks, but somehow we can't seem to get the mortgage market going again.
Tax period.
That's right. I guess that's the trickle-down theory.
Yes.
So, I'll get back to you on that front, I'll find out from Mike what his understanding of the latest is, but I do think it's, at the moment, dead in the water.
In the context of the improvements downtown, there's the project underway on Bedford Road by the 7-Eleven and Lukoil, and I don't know if we're going to discuss that tonight in context of crossing guards or whatever, but I want to make sure that we do cover it.
Now would be a good time to do it, probably. As you are all aware, as you go through town, we have, are partly through the construction of a substantial change in the intersection at Lukoil, where Bedford Road curves around and abuts Pleasantville Road near 7-Eleven, Lukoil, Key Foods, et cetera. This improvement works its way up past the Art of Wine, and includes some changes to the pedestrian conditions also at Jean Jacques. This is a program that's partly funded through the county community development block program, with matching funds from the Village of Pleasantville. The core of it is two major changes. One is the introduction of a traffic light at that Lukoil corner, and in addition to that, very substantial improvements in the pedestrian conditions in that area. Any of you who walked through there know that in a couple of places, there was no sidewalk at all, or the sidewalk had been sort of consumed by the adjacent commercial property owner. We are replacing all the curbs, reconfiguring the intersection a bit. There will still be a free right turn lane, as there is right now, as you come past 7-Eleven, but there will be traffic light there controlling the left turns, and controlling the left turn to go out toward Pace. There's been some concern, a couple of people have commented to me, that that may make it worse. The traffic engineers have run the study every which way and backwards, and they have computer modeling to demonstrate that if those lights are properly synchronized, that is, the light at Pleasantville Road, the light, the new light at Lukoil, and then the lights that work their way up through the downtown, and we've been assured that that synchronization will happen, that at peak times, they can push more cars through those intersections more safely than happen now. So, that project is well underway, and I'm happy to report we're putting in some nice, I think, streetscape improvements as well. Granite curbs instead of concrete, which cost a bit more in the initial cost, but both look better and last an awful lot longer, and an imprinted brick pattern between the curb and the sidewalk and the like. We're now going to have a sidewalk, in fact, already have it, around the sort of Carvel Shopping Center, working its way up towards the bridge, some areas in that section of town that were grim pedestrian conditions. So, I think from the standpoint of kids walking to school, as well as anybody walking anywhere, it will be an awful lot better. When you mentioned the question of crossing guards, one of the things under discussion is that a number of community members have expressed an interest in a crosswalk, crossing guard at the intersection of Great Oak Lane and Mandrell Road, which is an intersection that has a little bit of a blind curve as you head out towards the direction of BRS, and as all of us know from personal experience, drivers are frequently going too fast, are too distracted, are manifesting frustration, having just emerged from the traffic jam up by the school, and are zigging their way around that curve frequently too fast. So, one of the thoughts under discussion is that when we complete this project at the intersection of Jean Jacques, where we currently have a crossing guard, we will now have the completion of this project, a dedicated crosswalk. completion of this project, a dedicated crosswalk cycle, push button, and a dedicated walk cycle in the traffic lights, that the crossing guard at that location could conceivably be relocated to the crosswalk at Great Oak Lane as a means of addressing that concern once we've created a safer condition down by Lukoil. So that's a subject that a number of community members, I think, are here tonight who are interested in, and you're welcome to comment when I see one. If you have anything to say about it when we open it up to public discussion, all comments are welcome. Crossing guards cost us about $12,000 apiece at the moment. These are spots that are difficult to fill because it's a job that requires somebody who's interested in working for a brief period of time in the morning and a brief period of time in the afternoon. It also requires a certain intestinal fortitude to do it in all kinds of weather. So as a result, we end up with a limited supply of crossing guards. Couple of people have asked us whether we could use the parking enforcement officers in that capacity, and the answer to that is that indeed we do. The parking enforcement officer typically only have one on at a given moment, is the first call substitute when we have one of the existing guards call in sick, which happens with some regularity. So we have a parking enforcement officer as pulled off the parking function to be a crossing guard. So the advantage to that, obviously, is that we have a legal as well as a practical responsibility to make sure all those posts are covered. Parents and kids have the expectation, they know where a crossing guard will be, and just because somebody calls in sick doesn't give us the freedom not to staff that post. So the parking enforcement people are our first line of defense and a necessary group to have as substitutes. So having them in a permanent post would be an issue for us. So that's the thought we have in mind on the crossing guard front. Clearly, there's more discussion to be had, but the overall crossing guard program is costing us, give or take, $120,000, $130,000 a year at this point in our current budget. So let me just bounce to the cable negotiation status, and then I'll stop talking, and you guys can all talk. And Jonathan can share in this discussion. As you all know, the Cablevision franchise that has existed for many years expired quite a few years ago and has continued to operate under the terms of a six-month extension issued by Albany while we negotiate both with them on a new franchise agreement and with Verizon as a potential new player. They are two enormously frustrating partners with which to negotiate, in part because they attack it in completely different ways, and in part because I think it's fair to say, and I have said to them directly and don't mind saying now, that each, I think, has allowed the other to carry the ball as the bad guy at moments when it benefited them collectively. So it has been a long and difficult and frustrating process. I know for Jonathan's been involved in for, what, how long, three years, to try to get to the finish line on this, and we've been pressing this extremely hard. I am both happy and sad to report that we have in our contract, in our hands, a contract from Verizon. Happy because we have it, sad because it is not what I believe it ought to be, but we are at the circumstance of looking at that quite seriously and saying, you know, how far have we gotten? How far is it realistic to believe we can go if we continue this any further? I can speak for myself in saying that I think that the notion of competitive cable services is a high responsibility of this board, and the reality is that in the jousting that goes on between these two potential providers, the public interest gets squashed. So the bottom line is that we have engaged an attorney to help us look over the contract they gave us. There are a number of aspects of the functioning contracts that exist in our neighboring towns that have made clear aspects of Verizon's contract that have the potential to come back and bite us. We're looking to avoid that, but I'm hoping that we'll be posting for a public hearing the Verizon contract in the month of November, at which point it will become a public document that all of you can share in the frustration that we have gone through collectively. So the other thing I would say is that I receive a lot of calls from people who are frustrated by the increasing cost of Cablevision services and by the enforced requirement that people who never had a digital cable box are now, in effect, losing services if they don't pay extra to get it. That's not a matter that the village has any legal control over, but I think it is fair to say, from what we've seen so far, that the way of the world for cable TV in general, both for Verizon and Cablevision, is at higher-end services. And Cablevision intends, at the end of the year, to withdraw from the market its current base package that's, you know, sort of in the high 50s per month, and their basic, the least expensive package they expect to offer, if I am quoting correctly, and I recommend you double-check me, will be in the high 70s. The number that Verizon has presented in other communities is in the similar ballpark. So the days of what seems like inexpensive cable television are clearly gone, but clearly the game for all of these companies is to engage customers in the so-called triple play, where you get telephone, internet, and cable TV all rolled up into one. Verizon is envisioning the quad play, where they throw cellphone into that, so that there are clearly some discounts and benefits attached to all of that. So stay tuned. We'll invite you to the public hearing. I hope it happens in November, and you can hear both the good and the bad news all of us.
We just want to say with the disruption of all the service from the cables and with us having to close down the TV station during the summer, having the PCTV website, being able to broadcast our meetings, has been very helpful in terms of outreach over the summer. But going forward for everybody, if somebody doesn't have cable, they can, on PCTV.org and .com, see the board meetings rebroadcast on a regular basis now, and that's been very helpful. Thank you.
PCTV 76.
Sorry.
It's a great aspect of it. Another thing people may not realize is that for perverse technical reasons, based on the way the system was originally built, the village signal actually goes through the high school. And as a result, because of the work going on in the high school, there have been a couple of moments, in fact, in the last week, when the village signal has been off the air because of the work going on in the high school, and that clearly is also a matter that we'd like to see rectified so that we don't struggle in that regard. I know, as we've discussed in the past, that the fact that a Cablevision signal doesn't align with the school district has been a source of frustration to you guys. Verizon asserts that that will be no problem at all for them to resolve in the context of a new contract, and I wouldn't be surprised if it will turn out to be no problem for Cablevision if Verizon is successful. So maybe that would be at least one good example of competition working in behalf of the consumer.
I'll believe it when I say it.
Why don't I hand this next list to Saul, because the next set of issues are on the school side of the table.
Thank you. As you all know, we have construction going on. As you all know, we have construction going on at the high school, and Mike Petrini and Mike Saracino from Andron Construction are here this evening. If you guys would come up to the podium there and give us an update, thank you.
While they're coming to the podium, I can report Yankees Angels, four to four, bottom of the 10th.
Top of the 11th.
Oh, I should refresh the screen. All right, Exton, you're now in charge.
Do you like them in the jury box over here? Okay, in our hardened jury box. Maybe we'll get outside here a little bit. Yeah, we're construction guys, so we like it outside.
Raise your right hand.
Nothing but the truth. We'll start with that. Hi, my name's Mike Perrini. I'm with Andron Construction. We're the construction manager up at the high school. The high school's actually a very exciting project, especially in these economic times when times are tough and not many construction jobs out there, as you just heard. So we're very appreciative of being working for the school district and in conjunction with the village. The project consists of three additions. One is for the cafeteria and library. The other one is for a science room, and the third one's actually tucked out back, and that's a boiler room. In addition to that, there's renovations that are going to occur, and they're going to consist of renovating pretty much the whole building. The project's phased, so it'll actually, even though the project has started, it will actually go out to the year 2011. Just want to introduce Mike Saracino. Mike Saracino is the actual man on-site all the time. He's the project manager, and he can explain the job very well to you.
Thank you. And Mike's right, I'm there day-to-day, and usually when you're there day-to-day, you kind of get a sense of how well things are doing. So we do appreciate having forums like this and these updates to let you know how well the project is going. It is going very well at this point. If you had an opportunity to drive up in the past week or so, you finally get to see the second volume of the three, of the third volume, actually, of the three additions. You get to see the science building, the steel structure going up and the metal deck going up on the left side of the building. The right side of the building is further developed. That's where the, Mike mentioned, that the library and the cafeteria are located. And the masonry work is now underway, as well as the, putting together the exterior shell and starting to close that addition for the winter. And thirdly, the boiler room addition furthers developed. The masonry work is completed on that building, and now we're inside the building, putting together boilers, the mechanical systems, the electrical systems, and the infrastructure for the rest of the additions. So in short, the project's going very well in terms of schedule, in terms of time. I think we're doing fine. Certain things are ahead, a couple of things might be a little behind, but we know where we are in terms of where the project is. In terms of budget, the project is doing well as also. Not a lot of hiccups. I don't think there's a lot of surprises that we've found. So in terms of budget and money, project's doing also very, very good. In terms of scope, project is still very healthy. I think we've identified, again, any conditions that may come as a surprise. What else want to talk about? Just inside the renovation work, we, over the summer, we did a music suite for you. Currently, we're working on a stage and auditorium that's getting repaired and finished up for November 2nd, and that includes new dimmer panels, new lighting, just cosmetic work as well as some HVAC and mechanical work in the auditorium. And again, the building itself is also getting an infrastructure upgrade. That's fire alarm system, PA intercom, security, new electrical service, which we had started in the fall of '08 and finished up, and did that work so we can do the new additions. New water service, including the fire line, data, and again, the whole renovation portion is cosmetic upgrades as well as the infrastructure upgrades. So in short, we're doing very well.
Thank you. I know for anybody who's been by the building in the last couple of weeks after the structure went up, and then certainly when the roof had a shape, people all of a sudden imagined that something real was happening, and with walls going up on the library and cafeteria in the last couple of weeks, it's reinforced that for everybody. Thank you.
Right. One thing we do want to say, though, is we very much, not in addition to thanking you for, you know, the work, but we do want to, in some form, apologize for the noise and dirt we make. Certainly during the summer, that's our construction season, and we do apologize for the noise. We find it necessary to do some of that. But in short, the big focus for us is to keep the school a school and really be a construction site second. So while in the summer, we do make some noise, we try to limit that much, much more during the school season.
Hi, you're Stasny. I know that Dr. Kankrow has been helpful in the neighborhood in sending out an email, and it's been distributed around to the neighbors, what they can expect, especially steel deliveries and that kind of stuff, and an impressive effort has been made to try to mitigate that whenever we can, recognizing, of course, that some part of this is just going to be a little difficult process. What do you envision as this project goes forward? Have you yet seen the sort of peak activity in terms of numbers of workers, or does that happen when you're working inside? Is it likely to be more disruptive to the neighbors at some point in the future, or...
I would say that our peak is going to be in the summer of 2010. That's really what we're looking for. And of course, like I said before, we try to compress all of our activities when the students aren't there, of course, and again, that keeps this school first, construction site second. But for the impact to the community, it's definitely going to be the summer of 2010. It's going to be our biggest summer, mainly because, like you said, the building shells will all be built, we'll be doing a lot of work inside, and what that does, that frees up for a lot of work to be done. Not only, just like right now, we can only have so many masons and so many steel workers, once you open up all the facility, not only the additions but the renovations, you will peak then. But the side benefit to that is that will, in some ways, impact the community less because we end up parking on school district parking lots, which are, of course, not used in the summer.
Right. And then the other question I had is, could you just give the community a little sense of the sequence of this at the point at which the circle is finished and the front entrance opens, and then you move to the back? Do I have that correct?
Sure. Well, I can tell you the most important part is that, see, Don's going to fire us all unless we get this picture for the graduating class of 2010. So that's the biggest thing on our radar screen. So the front of the school has to be done cosmetically.
You're going to fire you. You have a half-done building.
Well, I guess he's going to fire me, then Mike becomes me, so it's real simple. You just replace the mics as you go. But no, we're definitely very confident we're going to make that milestone. It is a big thing, because a lot of these students have been impacted by construction throughout their educational careers. In fact, the people, let's face it, we built Bedford Road, that got finished, and we did a lot of additions into the middle school, and now, of course, the high school's getting renovated. So there's a certain number of students there, pretty much live with construction. So one of the things that, you know, Don has very, very much pounded into our head is that they should, at least at the very least, get a nice picture, like every other graduating class, on the steps of the nice, you know, painted columns and the front entrance being done. So that, I would say, is job one for us, for the students. But as far as the sequencing of work, you're absolutely right. The additions out front will be done first, will be done first, and then, of course, the circle in front. And then what happens is we actually go into the building. And then, once we go into the building, theoretically, we will take certain sections of it, and then we'll renovate those as time goes on. So the big picture is, is when the additions are done, the students move into the additions, we take parts of the existing school, and one by one, turn those parts over to the students.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that in an attempt to keep the community informed of what's going on, Dr. Antonecki has done two superintendent's corners so far, updating. We have folks from Andron and from KG&amp;D with us, and we go through and tour the site and update the community, and they run on our station, and they're also on the PCTV 76. Did I get that right? And we'll probably be doing another one early in November because things have really been moving along.
Yeah, I think it's important that, again, we use venues like this, the superintendent's corner, the Board of Ed presentation as well. We've done some work there as well to communicate to you how the project's moving along. In terms of short term, we have scheduled updates that we work with the contractor. Again, in terms of team, I'll say that KG&amp;D is the architects, Kyra Garment and Davidson, excellent architects. And again, you can see from the, if you've seen any of the renderings of the building, it's going to be a great site, great project. And also, I'll just note, Rock Built Construction, too, is a very good contractor, a strong contractor, that's very conscientious. And, you know, our job's to hold them to task, but they also are making an effort to finish the project, too, on time. So, I mean, it's a lot of good things.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
There's certainly been some challenges to the field use for sports activities because of the construction, John Bauer line.
Could I ask one question regarding the construction? When we were considering all of these projects that we've been building with the schools, there was a certain amount of state aid that was also factored into that final number. And given the pressures that we felt from New York State, and I'm sure you're feeling those as well, how have those projections of state aid held up over the years?
Projections of state aid formulaically were still at 39%, which is wonderful for our school district as compared to other school districts. Fortuitously, when we built the Bedford Road School, at that point in time, there was such a need for construction and facility updates in the state of New York that they gave school districts who constructed during that time an additional 10%. So the Bedford Road School was at a 49% eligibility on their building rate. This school is at 39%. If you look at neighboring school districts, they're around 10% or 12%. So the formula somewhat has been very beneficial. There's been a save harmless clause in the state that gives you your most favorable year, and that has really been the same for us, and we're happy that it's the same.
And they have not, they have not changed anything in this recent budget meeting?
So, right, and so in the discussions that the state has had about budget cutting, this is not one of those things that's on the table?
No.
And you would let us know, because we're, you know, we're trying to formulate budgets as well, trying not to burden the community with it.
I think one thing that was beneficial, as you're aware, and I've been speaking about this for quite some time, the Wicks Law is a law on public work where you have to have separate primes. You have to have a plumbing contract, an HVAC contract, an electrical contract, your general construction, and the... construction, and the coordination of that gets pretty difficult. Also, it's a finger pointing game when there are delays and the other contractor puts in a change order and it's, it's very cumbersome. And fortunately, we've had Andron Construction with us through the other projects when we've had a WICS project. There has been a revision in the state law and there were two revisions. One that said, public projects under $1.5 million didn't have to become a WICS law project. Obviously, any school project is not going to be under $1.5 million, very, very few. But they did have a clause that stated that if you enter into a project labor agreement, which means that you make a pre-agreement with the unions and you say that you will only bid that out for union work, you did not have to, you know, have a WICS law project. And you could have one general contractor who would be responsible to subcontract all of that HVAC, that plumbing and that electrical. The board made a decision and the board made a wise decision in consultation with our consultants to bid this out as a project labor agreement. Why did we do that? Just what, you know, Steve was talking about before. This economic climate, there are a lot of people looking for works and we, we, you know, there was conjecture that the bids were going to come in well and they did. So that would have been our only concern. So now, and I think the reason why this project is moving so expeditiously with everybody working on board is the fact that Rockbill Construction now is responsible. So if the plumber doesn't show up, the electrician can't say, well, you know, I couldn't put that pump in because the plumber didn't show up to put the PVC piping in and so on and so forth. And also, at the end of the project, we won't be involved hopefully with that litigation where everyone's pointing fingers and you're trying to settle what's, what's going on. So as far as legislation is concerned, and I, I'll go testify in Albany, this has been a breath of fresh air for us. The, the WICS law is antiquated. I don't know why it's there. I mean, it was there when there was Tammany Hall and you didn't have, you know, the media and you didn't have technology to really be so, you know, inspective. But now that, that law just costs people additional monies and communities additional time, monies and litigation. And I am so pleased that this project is a non-WICS law project. Do we still need Andron Construction? You bet your life we need Andron Construction to make sure that there's quality control and that, and that project runs along expeditiously. But at the end of the day, I really feel that, and you can see it now. You can see the, the rate that that project is going and the quality and the fewer problems that we have because of delays and change orders. You don't have change orders as readily as you would have them in the past. So it's something that I'm happy about and, you know, the reason why I'm saying this, and I know you, you talked about legislation and state aid, it's important that, you know, we continue. And I, and I, and I say to all the citizens, it's, it's important that you're here in this room and it's important that you're in our media center speaking to people in local government. But there are a lot of legislative issues that need to be aired out in Albany. So I think that, that the community members who help us and give us input will also give that same type of input at, at the state level.
Ryan, it was a very big mistake getting Don started on the way.
Should have warned me. It's very interesting. Thank you. A segmentary meeting.
But I just wanted, so our building aid, I don't think is at all at risk. I think we have some limited exposure on our operating, which I think will be fairly limited. But at least based on what Governor Patterson has proposed, I don't think the legislature has really started on that. But if there is any exposure, it's on the operating side.
Have they started on anything?
And it just, I mean, as long as we're talking about that, your, your budget that you're, I guess, in the process of formulating at this point, does that look sort of within the realm of, of, you know, payability by the community? Can we, or are you looking for, you know?
It's a little early. It's a little early for us to start the budget. It'll happen after Thanksgiving. In order, John Bowerline, who's our director of athletics, has a report on how he's been handling the, the fields and field usage with the change on, at the high school. John, welcome.
Thanks for having me. I guess I started here in February, so I only know construction, so it really hasn't been that big of a deal to me. I guess I'll, I'll start with some of the issues that I've experienced that have, might have had a little bump in the road, but really hasn't been that difficult. Due to some construction in the back of the school, we lost the, what was called the high school backfield for the season. And that was for a reason of putting a overflow pipe, I guess, from the excess water that was going to be from the school and going off into a holding pond. So I didn't really want to take the chance. I probably could have played a couple of games there, but I didn't want to take the chance of ruining the young grass that was planted there. So we have lost that and the coaches have been very accommodating about and flexible about moving practices and changing. And I've also was able to use Parkway for a couple soccer games, which is a little unusual. We really generally just play football and baseball down there. But I have played two soccer games and tomorrow it'll be the third soccer game down on the main field. The other thing I've noticed recently is at pickup time, if we have a lot of away games, there's been a challenge with getting those buses near where the high school gym entrance used to be because now there's a construction fence that's out on the road a little ways. And with parents picking children up as well as the buses trying to get in and out of there, picking up the teams, you know, that's been a little difficult on days when we have four or five teams playing offsite. But it, it's been working out, you know? It hasn't been a, a real sore spot. Just to dispel any rumors, I've gotten, received a number of calls, people thinking the high school gym is closed due to construction. That's not the case. We've been playing volleyball games in there. Fans and parents have been entering through the back of the school, which is where I guess all the budget votes and votes are taking place and, and make their way up, upstairs. It may be a little bit more difficult in the wintertime with the weather as well as the capacity. Due to the construction, we've lost some exits. And through a formula, I guess the Andron, Mike could explain it better, but there's a formula where when you lose so many exits, you lose the capacity to hold the amount of people that normally that would hold. So now we're only going to be able to hold 250 people in the gym this winter for games, which obviously, when you first hear it, could be a problem. But some of the games, I was able to befriend my colleague over at Pace and we're, we're going to be able to use their gym on Friday nights for some of the games that we anticipate large crowds. So that shouldn't be an issue really for this winter. Looking at the spring, obviously, you guys know more than I do that sometimes with the weather, Parkway will open up a little later. Due to the situation, what I've looked at doing for the spring is trying to move home games early in the season and asking Bosie's, who does the scheduling, to put our home games later in the season. And that'll help in a couple of ways. One, by moving them later in the season, will give that field time to dry out and, and get ready. And it also, Pace ends school in May, as you know, and that'll afford our opportunity to play games there when necessary, if the weather, you know, the unpredictability of the weather. You know, after construction ends, the, the good thing is it looks like we'll gain another small field that I'll be able to use for middle school sports, which is right now where the middle school teachers are parking. That is going to become a small field where I might be able to put some modified soccer, modified lacrosse, to have them on our facilities rather than using soldiers and sailors or Parkway. So, you know, that's the good news. We may gain a field or we will gain a field out of this that will be of a substantial size. I think it'll work out good for the district.
And very beneficial for recreation.
So that, that field's by the Ashland Avenue entrance to, to the middle school, over there, the north end of that turf field.
And that's, that's about all I have.
John, how are you going to manage the capacity issue at the high school gym? Are we going to get tickets or?
Well, we know certain games are going to produce certain crowds, obviously. The Briar Cliff game will be moved to Pace. I'll be looking to do that in the next week or so. I've already talked to the Briar Cliff Athletic Director, letting him know that, you know, this was the plan. But the one way to easily do it is, and to monitor it, is to pull out just the one side of the bleachers and leave the other side shut. This way I know that that set of bleachers full are only going to be able to hold a certain amount of people, you know? And I think that, that should work out. You know, we're only talking probably a couple basketball games. It's not every game because during the week, we're going to look to play the varsity games, which is our, you know, juniors and seniors at 4:30 rather than 6:00, you know, to prevent some of the crowd, you know? And obviously, if people aren't used to that, well, you know, they're going to have to get used to it based on what is going on in the high school. It is what it is and, you know, we're going to do our best to accommodate, you know, the parents as well as the people that have come to the school to watch the games.
John, let me ask, one of the issues that's sort of been a perennial concern in recent years, especially with the swelling student body at the school and the increase in the number of JV teams and modified teams. In the end, all these are field resources that are getting shared between the school district and ASO and Dads Club and the like. Do you envision that the number of, at least in broad strokes, the number of teams you have and the amount of, of practice slots you need on fields is roughly stable in the coming years?
Well, we made some adjustments this year when I met with Linda and some of the recreation people, ASO, Dads Club representatives. And based on what I saw last spring, I asked for this fall, if, based on losing the backfield, that if the rec could hold off until 6:30 before them using, you know, the, the turf fields at the school to give my, to give our high school teams additional practice time. You know, right now, I don't foresee down the road adding any additional sports or teams. And I think before that is looked at, if anyone brings it to my attention, it really has to be looked at as, do we have the facilities to be able to add something? And, you know, I, I don't know what's been added in the past or recently, but obviously that, that needs to be looked at if we ever look at doing that.
Well, there was a point, I think, when you didn't have enough kids to field the JV squad in every sport. Is that true?
Yeah.
But at this point, am I correct that you've got a varsity and a JV squad for every sport and therefore that drove?
Field hockey? Field hockey, this year we only had nine girls for the JV team. So as a result, that, that, that program for this year was dropped. My intentions is to get that, that's the, the worst thing an AD can do or the toughest decision is to make that move and drop a team because, you know, there's people affected by it. And, and, you know, that's the last thing you want to do is, is do that. Fortunately, a number of the girls, most of them, decided to stay with the program and are practicing with the varsity teams and, and still experiencing field hockey, but not necessarily the games. But my plan is to have that program back next year.
So it sounds like, at least to the extent that we can see into the future, your field needs are roughly stable next few years?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
And I had a question about the Pace team use. And I guess I'm speaking more as a Roamer Avenue resident than a trustee here. I guess it's not really a question as much as just a, a comment from a neighbor that living on Roamer, it's been, it was a rugged summer construction wise. And that's great. We're, we're, they've done a wonderful job and the building's terrific. And I guess I would just ask you to be cognizant from a Roamer, from the neighborhood point of view, that, you know, there are times when, those rare times when things are really quiet, that, that all of us who live right in the neighborhood of the school, whether it's Roamer, Ashland or any of those streets, really a sunny side, appreciate those quiet times. And as you think about slotting more teams and leagues into some of those quiet times like Sunday morning, where currently I think it's still sort of a quiet time in the village, that you just be cognizant of the fact that, that we've, you know, that, that it does take a toll, you know, traffic and speeders and all of that stuff. So, and I guess there were, there were times this summer with the Pace teams, I thought, oh man, you know? It's just, you know, we're putting up with a lot here and suddenly it's not just us and, and, but it's some other team. And I understand we're trading with Pace.
To my knowledge, they were, they were never there on Sundays.
Somebody was. I'm not sure what. There, there's been some maybe limited Sunday use. But you're right. But they're, they're real early and so, you know, it's just a, just a comment.
I will keep that in the back, back of my mind and make sure that if they do use our facilities, do it later.
And maybe after the construction will be less sensitive to it. So I'll be less sensitive, but.
No, that's a good point and I, I appreciate that.
We, we have construction going Sunday still fairly late and then we wake up really early, the whistles and shouting and, and traffic. And you think, you know, we're a neighborhood, we're, we're sort of, you know, overlapping needs and, and worlds. And, and so we try to understand, I mean, none of us would live there if we didn't like it. We really like, we think it's the best place to live. But on the other hand, there are just times when I, you're new and I'm just.
I appreciate the, you know, the insight.
Good.
Actually, John, I have a question. As everyone remembers, last spring, the Wizards game was, was moved up from its usual May date to January, February because of this gym issue. And I, I know it's on the calendar for January or something like that. Do we know a location of that?
I believe one of the, is that for the community scholarship?
Yes, sir.
I, I believe that's going to be at Pace.
Okay.
And I've kind of worked it out with Pace and gave them the contact information of who they need to contact, which is Mike Winn.
Right, great.
So yeah, I'm pretty sure that it will happen at Pace.
I mean, that's a huge community event that sells out the high school gym and so hopefully, we're going to be able to do that at Pace and accommodate even more people.
No, I'm almost positive it's at Pace.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
One thing that's worth noting and is reminded of by John's comment about Pace is that we've, we've had some interaction lately with Pace and their relatively new president, Stephen Friedman. And Pace is currently in the process of a facilities and campus master plan for their Pleasantville campus. Right now, they've engaged an architect, they're doing the same thing for the New York City campus. But it's clear that President Friedman's goals for the Pleasantville campus include establishing more of a full spectrum undergraduate campus life at the Pleasantville campus. And they clearly are in the business of putting together both a master plan for facilities but also a fundraising and financing plan that would allow them potentially to add more dormitory housing on their campus, but also to add something like a theater, an art gallery, et cetera. So it remains to be seen what will come of their master plan, but I think they have made clear to us that they have substantial goals over the next 10, 10 years at the Pleasantville campus. And it's certainly of interest to us as a community, of interest to Pleasantville being more of a, a better connection with Pace as, as a, both a resource and as a source of commerce. And President Friedman has reached out to us a number of times and I look forward to interesting times in the coming few years.
Of course, traffic patterns have changed with the construction and we have Chief Charlety and Dr. Kankrow who are out there many mornings along with Mr. Fonda, helping the traffic come along. So if you gentlemen would like to give us an update, that would be great.
I need to.
No, you, no, you.
You first.
You've got to go. Barry didn't give me my bullet though.
Depends what you say, George. I got the one right here.
Like, you know, like you mentioned, Mr. Scoll, like you mentioned, we've, Dr. Kankrow brought up about the, the school before the construction to see how things were then to to kind of develop a baseline as to what, you know, what was going on at that point. And then we've been there several, on several occasions, at the, at the high school, when the constru, either as the construction was going on. And the one significant issue, I think it affects traffic, and oddly enough, and I think I said this last year, oddly enough, in a positive way, is by closing the circle, we've eliminated one of the significant turning movements that was problematic over the years. And I'd gone up there on numerous occasions with Dr. Cancro and Mr. Fondy, trying to figure out, you know, how to make that left turn coming out of the circle after the people had dropped their children off, and tried to get back on Roamer Avenue, how to make that an effective turning movement, and never could come up with anything. And boom, right in front of us was closing the circle made it effective. So it seems to have, it seems to have worked. The odd thing, and the thing we saw last time, is we've had a few people, and one of them I did have a little conversation with, who came up, Clinton Street dropped their child off, and then decided to try to make a U-turn to go back out, which was a problem. Two people did that. One won't do it anymore, I hope. The other one couldn't get, so, you know. But basically, those are the, those, from what I've seen, are the odd issues that have popped up. Other than that, the traffic's flowing. The, the thing I would only, the only thing I would ask to throw out to the public, and the public's watching, you know, home, whenever they get to see this, if it's not tonight, would be that if you could, you know, work on possibly, with the children that are older, these high school kids, more or less, dropping them off a little further away from the school would be beneficial. You know, dropping off, dropping them off at Sunnyside, because that's where the traffic seems to be coming from. That eliminates one more car here, one more car there, and I think will be...
And not the library.
And not the li, yeah, the library, right.
Right.
And, oh, that's another thing. From a police perspective, taking the school out of the mix, we've been trying to concentrate some of our police resources at the library, before the library, actually, on Roamer Avenue, between Roamer Avenue and Bedford Road. We've had, tried to do it quite a few times. Unfortunately, the time that's busy for the school district, which is when the kids are getting in school and getting out, also unfortunately, is busy for us at times. But for the past, I would say about the past two weeks, we've had on, on an occasional basis at least, had a police officer up there trying to deter people from parking in that area. And it seems to have worked, although they weren't very happy, most of them, it seems to have worked. The other issue is the library has closed their parking lot, or not closed it, actually. Tried to accommodate parking by not over-parking in there. If the lot is full...
They're simply closing it when all the spaces are occupied.
Right, correct.
So the, the problem had been that cars were stacking up in the drive aisles, indeed, people were pulling up on the grass, and it was an extremely difficult situation, so...
Right, and dangerous, too. I mean, I talked to Mr. Fieron, the library director.
In our presence.
Oh. How you doing?
How do you determine who's a library patron and who isn't, using the parking lot?
I think that they're not seeking to determine the reason you're coming into the lot. They're simply saying, if there's a space available, you're welcome. If there isn't a space available, you can't come in and pull up on the grass or park in the driveway.
But the, the problem remains that if the library lot gets filled largely with parents, it begins to affect the ability of the library to function as a library.
Right. And, John, you want to come up and add to, to the discussion? This is John Fieron, the library director.
I've, I've been, I've been in that situation myself, and seen the stacking in the driveway, trying to get into the library, with one of my daughters to get library resources, and thinking, you know, this is really, that was impacting me personally, but must be impacting a lot of people during those times.
You need the library resources.
We actually have a people counter, and I just checked it today, to see what the impact was of what we're trying to do, and there's been absolutely no change in the amount of people in the library. If you go in there anywhere from 2:30 to 4 o'clock, it's packed every day. Tons of kids, parents, students doing homework. The after-school program's starting in two weeks. We'll have another 50 kids a day probably attending that. So we feel that it's actually becoming more accessible, curiously enough. Somewhere between 5:00 to 3:00, and 10 past 3:00, three or four times, maybe, we have to save a car, you can't come in because we're full. But what we've seen is more people seem to be making alternate plans to pick up their kids, and so that the lot isn't accessible now, much quicker than it used to be. Whether or not we let cars in, if it's packed and you can't get in, you can't move around it, it's not accessible. So what we're seeing, and, you know, the evenings are not dark yet, and it's not super cold, so it might get a little different, but we've been, we've been really happy. Lots, a lot safer, a lot calmer, and as early as 5:00, 10:00 past 3:00, it's over, and there's lots of spots available.
How was yours, just as an aside? How is the library patronage been over the last couple of years? Is it spending, or...
114 years old. Last year was our busiest year ever. This year, we're busier. Yeah.
A significant percentage was there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, up until eight, nine years ago, we did 300,000 checkouts. That was a really busy year. Last five years, they've been 420, 430, 440,000. We're seeing 6,000 people a week come through the doors. We have something like 15,000, 20,000 people a year coming to the programs. So, yeah, it's really busy.
Yeah. It's a great resource to have.
Yeah. I got a plug in. The after-school program for the middle school kids starts November 2nd. We have an open house for all the special ed parents in the library district, Mount Pleasant Valhalla, Vicantico Pleasantville, coming up November 9th, co-hosted with Pleasantville SEPTA. And we're, we're really looking forward to a great summer, I mean, a great fall/winter season. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, John, and I, I'm pleased to report that John used to be a commuter, to the very good job he did in Pleasantville, and he's now one of us, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I live half a mile, and I drive to work.
But don't park at the library.
And just to kind of like wrap it up, one of the other things that Dr. Cancro and I participate in, actually, Dr. Cancro runs, and a number of people participate in, but, you know, I get to participate also, is in the safety meetings that go on, and those safety meetings involve not only construction safety issues with Andron Rockbill, which are a great bunch of guys to work with, you know, I worked with Andron when they did the Bedford Road School, you know, had some participation in the Jacob Burns Center and in the high school, and I tell you, makes my job a lot easier, and just knowing, I pick up the phone, I don't have to yell, I don't have to say anything, I just, look, this is my problem, it's taken care of, so thank you. But in any event, I get to participate in safety meetings, and those safety meetings do include a, an agenda item always on traffic safety, where I can say whatever I want, and, you know, Dr. Cancro's more than happy to, to listen.
As long as you don't give him the bulletin. He has the bulletin to listen to. I have to say, we're very fortunate to have the chief and Dr. Cancro working on these issues. I don't know if the community knows that, but Dr. Cancro wears another hat in his community. He's a former fire chief at the Vicantico Fire Department, head of commissioner. He does all our emergency training, so Dr. Cancro has a strong background in that area, and obviously, along with the chief. So all of the safety concerns surrounding the project, and a lot of other things, are always taken care of with these two gentlemen. So this is just an example of the cooperation that the mayor was talking about at the beginning of the meeting that we have with the village, and we're very, very thankful, because anytime we ask Patty, or the chief, or Mr. Johnson, as far as the roads are concerned, they're always there for us. So we, we thank the village, and thank you, Peter, and the board. Thank you.
Likewise.
There's a new initiative that involves the school district, as well as a larger community. It's called the Northern Westchester Healthy Kids Coalition, and Mary Fox Alter is our Director of Instructional Services and Technology, and she's going to bring us up to date on that. Thank you, Mary.
Good evening. My pleasure. First of all, I do want to thank, while I have this moment, John Fieron. We've loved the partnership with the Mount Pleasant Public Library. All three schools have different initiatives with the library. John has served on our library evaluation committee, and we've won a number of awards based on that relationship and with SEPTA. So again, thank you, John. This year, we're embarking on our second year with our Healthy Kids Coalition. It's a community-based wellness initiative, started by Northern Westchester Hospital, with their goal to improve the health of children through a community-based approach. Last year, we had our passports project, and we had a great celebration in the Bedford Road School. The mayor attended, the chief of police, our youth officer, and we saw almost 650 children practice yoga exercises, and received certificates for successfully completing their journey to wellness. This year, we're asking everyone, and I'm going to ask everyone on the village board, as well as my school board, including all teachers, to adopt a wellness goal. It could be something like encouraging yourself to get more sleep at night, or to drop a few pounds, to maintain a few pounds, to make better choices with food. And we're going to ask the children and the teachers to do this as well, and hopefully, at the end of the year, we'll celebrate our completion towards that.
You have to divulge our...
You know, I could talk to Mrs. Glot, you know how we would be. I'd love to have, like, posters around the auditorium, and...
Oh, good.
And have little children interview their adults here in town about how they met that goal. We're looking to have a wellness fair in, at the Bedford Road School, and we're going to be doing things like showing children how to correctly wash their hands, in addition to having the hospital present little workshops and booths. So if there's anyone here in this community that might like to join us that day, we'd love the outreach, and please join us on this year's initiative towards our journey for wellness.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for your leadership along those lines. Thank you.
We've made our way through the agenda items that we had on our side of the table, and now invite members of the audience who have questions, comments, concerns on these or any other subjects to bring them to us. Let us know your name when you arrive, although we, your reputation precedes you.
Thank you. Aunt Cahill. I just wanted to mention, in the school news and views, the athletic director, he left.
Just to be serious, maybe we're going to make a...
Oh, only because I want to just say thank you to him for writing an article about hazing. I think, obviously, we need to see that, we need to see the leadership. I think the athletic director took the leadership from it. I think he did a great job in the article, but also, kind of before Halloween, kind of reminding people pranks are not funny, they're serious, it's not funny to the person who's getting the prank, and it all goes to hazing. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you to him.
Thank you. It's worth noting, this year, Halloween falls on a Saturday night, and to the extent that that might have kids out later, or behaving in wild and crazy ways, the police chief is organizing his group to, to make sure that we have as much control as we can, and we encourage, very strongly encourage, parents to be aware of what their kids are doing, and expect them to be home at a reasonable time. We have had, at a couple of points in the last 10 years, some Halloween nights that were decidedly problematic in various neighborhoods, and we're looking to make sure that doesn't happen. The risks and the consequences to, to kids are high, and the best advice is to stay out of trouble. So we're looking to have a fun night, not a tough night.
Thank you, Ann. That really gave me a reminder. A community member contacted me and, with, with a concern, and she said her concern was echoed by other community members, and asked if the school could help her with this concern. And essentially, it was sidewalk courtesy, that a number of times, she felt that there were people, most, most of the time, children, but sometimes even adults, but when they're walking on a sidewalk, they may be oblivious to the fact that other people are coming, and the other people have to leave the sidewalk, and either walk on the grass, or, or walk in the street. We don't, we don't want that to happen. So along those lines, we are going to do everything we can to communicate that to the children in school, and we'll ask everyone to remind their children. I coined the phrase, "When someone's inside, move to the right." So we're going to communicate that to our grandchildren.
Would you like that as a button or a t-shirt?
Whatever.
Is there a melody that goes with that?
We'll work on that.
I don't, I, I, obviously, we're having a little fun here, but it's a legitimate and a serious concern. I think all of us realize that lots of people lead busy lives, and we live in an constrained space, but I think all of us, every day, encounter circumstances where we realize perhaps we could have been more attentive to the needs of others, and others could have been more attentive to our needs. So that's a, a special concern of ours in terms of safety around the schools. I have commented at previous meetings, I walk the dog around school drop-off time near the high school and middle school, and there are an awful lot of parents screaming around the corner with one hand on the wheel, and one hand on a cellphone, and an elbow cradling god knows what, and a cup of coffee lurching around on the dashboard. It's a recipe for trouble, it's against the law. We need people to behave more responsibly, especially at a time when kids are going to school. So we have a call. Hello? Would you like to be on the air, Michelle? Hold on a second. Michelle, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor, and trustees, and Board of Ed members. This is Michelle Lucia, 386 Bedford Road. I'm calling, I just wanted to comment on a couple of items mentioned tonight. One is the addition of a crossing guard at Manville and Great Oak, and I think that would be a wonderful addition to the safety component of kids walking to school. I agree with you, Peter, about people coming around that curve, speeding and distracted, so a crossing guard makes a lot of sense. Also, I wanted to mention that I frequently see village employees, and also police officers, which is most disconcerting, talking on handheld cellphones, either in the patrol car, or in the village truck or vehicle, so...
While driving?
Yes, absolutely, while driving. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that there should be, you know, we, I rarely see people being pulled over for using a handheld cellphone, but when you see a police officer using one, you begin to feel that there really is no hope to enforce that law, which is a good one. So I would like some attention paid to that. And also, the question about Halloween coming on a Saturday night, I would just like reassurance or comment from the chief if we'll have our youth officers on duty that evening, since it could be a potent, you know, mixture, or combination for kids being out on a Saturday night, and things not going well.
All right. First, Chief, you can comment on that. Meanwhile, thank you, Michelle, for calling in. I'll see to it that a clear message about village employees of any stripe violating the law is sent out tomorrow. So, Chief, do you want to just comment on that? We'll hang up. Michelle, you done with your questions?
Yes, thank you, Peter.
So you can listen on the air there.
Whether, whether, you know, Halloween's problematic for us, it could be on a Tuesday, Wednesday. The, the fact that it's on a Saturday makes it that much more difficult, but we've always had our youth officer staff Halloween, and that'll be no different this year. The big change this year, though, in a kind of a general sense, is the fact that over the past year and a half, we've been concentrating on having additional officers trained as youth officers. We've sent two officers this year for training, and we sent two officers early in the spring for training as, to be certified youth officers. So right now, we have the, the, rather, I think from a police chief's standpoint, the, we're in the enviable position for other agencies, in that we have a significant number of our officers who have been trained as basic-level youth, I rather, basic-level police juvenile officers. So we, it extended that training down. So if we have a situation in one part of the village, while that situation may be handled by a person who's assigned the duty of youth officer, we have patrol officers now who are capable of handling it as a patrol function. So we've pushed that, which is in line with what's going on in, in modern policing, we've pushed that, that training capability down to, to the, to the entry-level police officer. So I'm proud to announce that, yeah, we'll have our youth officers working at night, and we'll have even more, because we have a significant number of our officers now trained in that, in that field.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Patty, just a quick follow-up to that. I know that in the past, when we've had Halloween on the weekends, the village, because of the increased number of people, tend to be a little bit messier, and on the weekends, it's tough, because it doesn't get, didn't in the past get picked up until Monday, although we've changed that recently, and we're planning on doing that again this year.
The, which didn't get picked up? I'm sorry.
Well, just the general cleanup of the village on a Saturday or Sunday following Halloween.
No, we don't plan on having anybody out on Sunday. I mean, it's double overtime, unless it's a real disaster, it'll wait till Monday. So hopefully, people will be neat and pick up after themselves.
I'd also like to add...
It's not going to...
We might have some, you should think about having somebody on call in case.
No, we will. I mean, just let me... I mean, just let me know. I'm around, so if something goes terribly awry, but if it's litter, it'll wait. Unfortunately, people will deal with the mess that is made until Monday.
It's not that we're happy about that, but as Patty mentioned, it's a double overtime undertaking, and so we redouble our request to the community to be respectful.
We also put security on the schools every Halloween. All of our buildings have security on them. So please tell the children not to go there, because you can get into trouble twice. Not only can you get in trouble with the law, you can get in trouble with the schools. So we just hope that everybody has a safe Halloween and acts appropriately.
Can you just hold one second? The chief had a follow-up on this. Tony, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, then you're next, Karen.
It was mentioned, oh, look, just shortly before, Mayor, I think you don't want to say it, that, you know, we kind of expect a little help from the parents. And I think one of the sad things in the conversation with Patty, just kind of like, kind of let this click in my mind, is, you know, the complaint is always that the police weren't there, the police didn't do this, the village didn't do enough to clean up. And I think I have to kind of echo what Patty is saying, and what you said, is basically, it's, you know, there's a team effort here. It's a team effort on the part of the police to be out there, but it's also a team effort on the people whose children are out there kind of having a good time. While we want everybody to have a good time, we understand the historic precedence in Halloween, there's also a point where, you know, too much, too much. And I think it's incumbent upon the parents of families, the parents of the children that are out there trick-or-treating to understand where their kids are, what's going on, and, you know, not have to take it out on the village if the place is dirty, or on the police if we have their kids downstairs, in a not-too-nice situation. And it does occur occasionally. And we've had incidents in the village, I've been here 53 years, okay? We've had some rough Halloweens here, they've gotten way out of hand. Thankfully, those were, you know, way, way back, when I was in school. I didn't participate in that. Simply because...
Thank God they didn't have Facebook then.
Yeah, oh, thank God. Simply because the man who, and the woman who were raising me, spent a lot of time and a lot of money to try and keep us in this community, didn't have any tolerance for that kind of stuff, so they kind of made sure the leash was put on tight. But any effect, in any event, there's this thing, co-production of public safety, we talk about in law enforcement, and it's a community policing term, and it says that, you know what, the police have a responsibility, but so does the community. So we really want people to be cognizant of what's going on at night, from their end as well as ours.
All right, we've got a little bit of line here. Okay, we'll put you on hold and come back to you. Go ahead, Karen.
Hi, I'm Karim Balducci from 8 Robbins Road. I'd like to also just expand on the health of our children. As many of you may have read in the Journal News, there was a great article on October 2nd on kids' power for the walking school bus. It's a program to have more children participate in walking to school. And with that, they, it's really parent-driven, but promoting walking within the village or different communities. So it was a great article. I did make just two copies, just to be a little green, so I'll share it with you. And then it has a list of other communities in West Chester that are actually participating in this walk-to-school or walking school bus. The PTA does a wonderful job with trying to promote walking within the community, but this actually takes it a step further in a little more organized fashion of how to get children to school and more people involved in walking. Also, just to expand on that, because we talk about the health of our children, and I won't bore you with too many statistics, but we do know that the incidence of obesity in children are at an alarming rate, and it is an epidemic, and the obesity has increased about 30% in our children. So we know that that leads to type 2 diabetes, actually, and yes, we thought type 2 diabetes is adult onset, and now we are seeing it in our younger generations, or our youth, or our teens. And anyway, to be in accordance to a lot of these healthy terms and guidelines, the Healthy People 2010, which are objectives by the U.S. Department of the Health and Human Services, they set these objectives every 10 years to decrease morbidity and mortality in the nation. And it was interestingly enough, I do teach a lot of courses on this, but I didn't realize too that one of their objectives is to increase the proportions of children's trips to school within, less than or equal to a mile, made to walk. So they want to try to promote the statistics from 30% up to 50% in getting children to walk to school if they live less than or equal to a mile from school, and children that are less than or equal to two miles from school to get them to bike. So I think that's a great objective that hopefully the village can pursue in trying to tap into communities or neighborhoods that may not have that accessibility, and you know which neighborhood I'm speaking about. Also, it would also help with the CDC. The CDC also puts out recommendations, and they are also, one of their goals is to encourage communities to build coalitions to create environments that are supportive for safe walking and bicycling to school. So I guess my question to you, the school board and also the village board, is do you work together in terms of providing safe passage to school in other communities or other neighborhoods, I should say, within Pleasantville that could benefit from that? And have there been discussions between the two boards?
Well, let me take a shot at that for starters, and anybody else can comment as they wish. I mean, as you've heard tonight, and as I think you know from experience, there are good lines of communication between our two boards and between our two administrations. And I think, if anything, the trajectory of those communications is on the upswing as the need becomes more apparent. So obviously, we're all collectively interested in getting kids to school safely. The school district is by law not permitted to do some of the things that we're in a position to do, and that would include make improvements on village land and/or provide crossing guards elsewhere than on school property. So I guess it's a long way around saying some of the issues, and certainly the issues you presented to us over the last some months regarding walkability in the Church Street neighborhood, are a village responsibility. The school district is obviously in a position to comment on the aspects of that that might benefit or not their school kids. But I think you've come to the right forum, which is the village board, to make that decision.
Great. And I was just wondering too, because I had asked for just some numbers or statistics from the village, from the school board, we were just trying to get a count. I came up with an estimate about 60 children ages high school and under that are in that area between Church Street, Robbins Road, and Place, and rough estimate of Brook Matter as well as Colony Glen, so...
I mean, you know this, and I mentioned it not to belabor the point, but one of the problems we grapple with is the village and the school district are, have different boundaries. The school district is larger than the village, and a number of the residents in your neighborhood, for example, Colony Glen, Brook Matter, et cetera, are school district residents, but Mount Pleasant, not Pleasantville residents. They are perfectly, appropriately, and from my standpoint, happily focused on Pleasantville as the root of their lives and as the center of their lives. We want that to be the case and hope it will continue to be. As a practical matter, the reality is they don't pay taxes to the village of Pleasantville, and there are some burdens placed on the village and its taxpayers associated with the fact that it's the locus of these community centers. That's true on a recreation front, that's true on the school front, that's certainly true in terms of other kinds of activities, the commercial, district churches, et cetera. We want to be that locus. We want, if anything, to grow that role, but by the same token, it does become problematic for us in some circumstances, where we're, in essence, in a circumstance where we have to provide an expensive benefit without the capacity to capture income from all the beneficiaries. So I throw that out not to suggest that in any way it's a way to evade our responsibilities. It isn't, but it's something we grapple with on a regular basis.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa McCullough, 55 Grandview Avenue. I'm here as a mom, as well as a business owner in town. I had the opportunity of spending about an hour with the youth officer, Detective Goki, and it was a great hour. It was a wonderful experience for me to really kind of understand what the role was of the youth officer for both a parent as well as a business owner. So I just kind of bringing out the idea that this is something that maybe you need to get across to people, just so that the community really understands what the role is or what the philosophies are of the police department for the youth officer, because it was really enlightening for me to understand that. And, you know, not even the kids, but the parents, having the parents understand what they really are there for would be very, very helpful. So it was a great hour that I spent with him, and it really helped me. I had an incident with my office building, but it ended up, I learned so much by it. So he was a great man. I just recommend maybe the Superintendent's Corner or a PCTV interview of what their role is and what sometimes people think their role is. So I would recommend that. Anyway, it was just something I just wanted to bring out there. And then one other thing, that is a little bit of a pet peeve, and I don't know if there's something we can do about it or not, but is there something we can do about police officers smoking in uniform, especially in locations where they are supposed to be modeling, you know, I mean, they're role models to our kids? I've found on several occasions, and I know I've brought this up to many members here already, that I've seen them smoking while the kids are left out, let out of school, by the library, at the canteens. So I know no one's supposed to smoke on public, on school property. So is there, I know, because they're in the uniform so long and they take breaks, I'm sure, is there a way of maybe having just some kind of mindful understanding of when it would be appropriate to do that and not? So that's just something I want to bring up, and that goes with the wellness issue. So maybe that could be the initiative.
I thank you for those two things. The first issue about youth officers in general, I'm glad to hear you have that chance to spend time with Sergeant Goki, who is a great guy and, I think, a remarkable asset to us, and glad to know that you got to know him better, and I think your point is well taken, that we have opportunities to sort of make some outreach there to make that work better. On the latter point about officers smoking in uniform, my personal goal would be that village employees do not smoke while on village duty. Obviously, people have whatever habits they have in their own life. I think it's a minority of officers who are smokers at all, but it's a discussion we will continue to have. Can I ask you to hold one second? Michelle Lucia, I think is still here, and perhaps we can get a quick answer, so. You still there, Michelle?
Go.
There you go. Hold on. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to bring up the Halloween issue with regarding eggs and shaving cream. Each year around Halloween, I've noticed at the A&amp;P, there's a letter hanging by the checkout. It's drafted by the Mount Pleasant Police Department, and it says, you know, basically, "Thank you for your understanding, but the owner of the grocery store, A&amp;P, whatever the company is, will not be selling shaving cream and/or eggs to young people, teenagers." And I'm wondering if that's something that could be implemented at Key Food or 7-Eleven, you know, in preparation for Halloween. Are we able to do something like that, as Mount Pleasant does?
All right, we'll ask the chief to come in. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. That's, you know, an excellent point, and it is something that we're going to be doing this year. It's not something we haven't done in the past, that we will be doing this year. We're going to be reaching out to them. We've reached out to them in the past, but I think this more, kind of formalizes it a little more. One, it puts it right there in front of the checker rater's face, but also, I think it acts as a, kind of a reminder to the parents as they're standing there in line, you know, instead of looking at what monster ate the Bronx or whatever, those newspapers they had, that this might be something a little different to read and underscore, yeah, underscore the effort that the police are putting in and that the community's putting in by seeing that letter there. So, yeah, we're going to be doing that, we're going to be reaching out to them, and we're going to be putting out something to them. You know, we'll model it right after what Mount Pleasant's on there and affect the program.
That's great. That's good news. Thank you for calling about that, Michelle, and for families who think they may have raffish children, maybe omelets for dinner on the 30th would be the ticket. We've locked you here in the jury box for a long while. Please come ask your question. Is the verdict guilty or innocent?
Hi, my name is Tanya Natus, and I'm married to John Firon, and I park on Sunnyside, so. And Jennifer and I like to walk, and we live on the other side of town, on the other side of the sawmill. Jennifer lives on Choate, and I live on Roselle. And we had a petition signed before you were mayor, and we got a lot of positive feedback from a lot of people that are here tonight, actually. And we just want to reiterate and sort of maybe get updated on a question about the intersection of Pleasantville Road and Mannville Road, because there's not a complete box, and it's just a really dangerous place. If you're trying to come from Roselle Park, and especially since Pace University is going to do all this great stuff, you know, there's kids that walk from there too, if you want to come to town from Roselle Park, there's no button. There's just no button. There's a crossing guard, but there's, it's just really hard. It is, it's, he doesn't always get out there in the intersection. It's, it's, and the people are coming down from Briar Cliff and you're, that want to go and make a right, and they don't stop, and there's brush in the way. It's just a dangerous...
Jennifer Tulchan, 91 Choate Lane. And there was a wonderful meeting, I guess, was it five years ago? I remember various principals came, and Patty was there, and the police chief was there. It was safe walks, or safe routes to school.
Yeah.
And at that time, you know, we were very enthusiastic. I know we've gotten wonderful support, and I know that eventually maybe some of the monies will trickle down to that next intersection. But for the time being, if we could, at the very least, I like Lisa's phrase, pet peeve, if we could please, please, just complete those walk signals. At this point, it's an orphaned part of town. We had a petition, we have over 100 signatures of people who walk either as commuters or as students to one of the schools, who all live right around Roselle Park. I'm actually wearing the clothing that I wore at 6:00 AM. I didn't know about this meeting, Tanya told me. So this is sort of appropriate. But you come down to the intersection, and it is not a completed box, it's just an orphaned part of town. And a lot of children are crossing, and we have these lovely maps that we had drawn. You're sort of forced to jaywalk in order to do it safely, if that makes any sense, because now that there's the 10, 9, 8, 7, 5, 6, all the way down to 1, on half of the intersection, you have to run through traffic to get there in order to complete the box. I know this is very boring. It's fascinating to us, very boring to all of you. But we have this complete, we have maps before and after, we have our 100 signatures, we have wonderful support, we know, but we would love to pass on all of this paperwork to you, including the letter from October 9th, 2008, thanking our police chief, because he's been trying, Patty Dwyer's been trying, everybody's been trying, and now it's a year later, and we still don't even have the walk box. We'd love to have the whole thing torn down, have real turn arrows and walk signals, but I don't even know if that would ever happen. But could we please have walk signals?
We, I can assure you that I remember well, before I was mayor but still on the board, your concern about this, and you provided a detailed map and a drawing, and everyone...
You've got all this.
Everyone's clear on the issue, and I think all of us are unanimous in agreement that something needs to be done. We have had, we now have detailed drawings for that intersection as well as others to make several improvements, had put them in the stimulus program, and don't let me get started lest I appear to be hostile towards our neighbors in Briar Cliff, because it's not about them, it's about the system that provided $18.8 million to them for their water plant and has thus far provided nothing to us, and we've received indication that we shouldn't be waiting too long, because we're not likely to get anything anyway. To make a long story short...
But we're not bitter.
It's a, I'm almost like Don in The Wicks Law if I get started here. I better stay away from it. And he lives in Briar Cliff, so. Patty, can you report...
It's a disturbing trend. The state does not have maintenance money.
Recognize it. Mandel is a state road.
Yeah.
That's our first problem.
They have money for capital improvements. Now, they know that they needed to come back to complete that crosswalk when the village finished that sidewalk, back in 2003, maybe? But sometime around 2006, I think they got to the railings, if you remember. Those railings were a disaster, and people were embarrassed, they were, you know, that was also part of their maintenance responsibility. That took eight years to get the railings done.
And we're not talking eight years of not saying anything about it. I mean, the regional district manager is coming to speak at some restaurant, and we all show up. I mean, it was that kind of thing.
Well, what happened is that they won't put it out unless they have a large capital plan of maintenance items, so they can bond this. They really don't have cash to do small things. Everything has to be done on a large scale. Everything has to be done on a large scale. So the story we'd gotten about this crosswalk cycle is that it will be packaged with a bunch of other crosswalk cycles that will be done in Region 8, which we're a part of, a larger districting area. And it, I don't think it's imminent, and we can't touch it. If we could, I even offered to buy the pedestrian head, because we had extra money in our civic space budget. They, they're not expensive. I said, "What if the village bought it and you put it in?" "Well, we can't do that." So, you know, we are in a holding pattern. Now, the only good news is that we do have to synchronize the light cycles when we put the new light at Luck Oil and the new pedestrian cycle here by Jean-Jacques. So it may, I may be able to convince the state to allow this contractor to fit, to put that in over there, you know, just figure out a way to get him, you know, to put in that additional walk cycle.
Well, we're fine on the east side, one can go from north to south, south to north. You can go from east to west on the north side, but you cannot get to the southwest side of the corner, which is where all the people live.
Right.
So it's just that little blip on the west side from south to north, north to south.
No, I, I know. I mean, you won't be able to, to follow Pleasantville Road across on the southern side by Manville.
Yeah, no, that's, we don't need that anywhere.
Not until we do a total redesign, but I know you just want to finish...
Yeah, just to finish.
The third leg of that.
Exactly, yes, yes.
Yeah, I know, I know. And it's, it's, as I said, it's just, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's just not, you know, something that the state is prioritizing now. If you remember, they did come in a few years back, and they gave us some nice countdown signals, and, you know, they replaced the walk signs with universal countdowns, and that was helpful. But at the time, the media center was under construction right here on Grant Street and Manville Road, so because of the sidewalk construction going on there, they couldn't access the signal. They never came back. They left us with one walk cycle there that says walk, you know, instead of the universal countdown. I'm trying to get them in just to change that one pedestrian head out, and they, you know, it's just, it's, it's just very difficult to get.
Patty, maybe because we're about to have this linkage and the synchronization with the new lights, maybe we can put the arm on Andrew Stewart Cousins and Richard Brighty.
Well, it, it's actually interesting. It's better it's not done that way.
Okay, I'll take your advice.
Yeah, it's, it's better that, that we just work with their local maintenance office right here on Route 117 and, and get them to come in and work with this contractor and get it done.
Well, do you think you can achieve that success?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes it's better not to, you, once we politicize, or at least look for additional help from people who are external, it gets difficult when, it's a different bureaucracy there, you know?
Okay, well...
But we, we, believe me, we know about it. I have more than one set of, you know, petitions on it, so we're hoping to get it done.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Michelle?
No, hello, how are you?
Would you like to say something?
Can you hold? Somebody's about to speak. All right. Do you have a...
Hi, I'm Kurt McKitty.
I'm on Washington Avenue. This is Lisa Hickey, and she's on Edgewood. And we're, we're here to talk about the Manville Road and Great Oak Lane crosswalk. I think probably the, the best way for me to explain it to you is to tell you a little story. I, I received a phone call from Jerry Lynch one night about 10 o'clock in this past spring, probably April, May. And he, he was, he was actually at the airport going out of town on a trip, but was so disturbed by what he had seen that day at that crosswalk, which involved my daughter Madison and her friend Remy Manna, that he felt compelled to call me from the airport. They were, they were coming home from school, and someone had stopped to let them cross at the crosswalk, which is what they're supposed to do, which doesn't happen a lot, but this kind person did stop. And this person was heading down Manville Road going toward Broadway, and they were crossing from, coming from school. And as they got to the middle of the crosswalk, they were cut off by another car baring around the corner, missing them probably by a step or two. Had they taken it and, and walked out in, in front of the car, they would have both been hit. And, and the car was going fast, so it would, would have been bad. So I'm, I'm hoping that tonight we could figure out something to do with that crosswalk. I've seen some of the other crosswalks. Is there, is there a, a guard at, at, at the Manville Road and, and Marble Avenue, right? Is it Manville and Marble? Nope, no, excuse me.
At the Sawmill.
Bedford, Bedford and Marble, the street.
At Jean-Jacques.
Yeah, Jean-Jacques. But there's crosswalks there, is there not?
There are crosswalks, but no dedicated walk cycle. So what, what we've been thinking about is the notion of completing the walk cycle, which is part of the project that's underway right now, and then when, at that corner, the kids will have a chance to push a button and get a dedicated walk cycle that stops traffic.
Okay.
Then that crossing guard would move to the other location. Among our problems we, we have is a legal requirement, as well as a practical one, that we provide enough notice to people that a crossing guard location has changed. So if parents are used to having a crossing guard there, I think the requirement is, what, 60 days' notice, chief, in order to actually move that person? Because, of course, people organize their life and their expectations about how the kids will walk, based on where they know there are crosswalks and where they know there are traffic lights and all of that.
I'm, I'm just worried about this crosswalk, because it, it, there is a bit of a blind corner there, and, and there's really, you know, if, if someone's coming from the other end and they're frustrated having been in the, the line there at the, where we have a crossing guard at Bedford Road School, or if they're just not paying attention at all, which has happened to me personally, where I crossed the street, and, and a woman just was talking on her cellphone or doing something and almost, you know, ran me over in that same crosswalk.
When we were out there that morning, Lisa and...
Yeah.
Don and all, as, as these guys were leaving, they were practically run over by a Bosse's bus.
Yeah.
And, and, and any number of people, again, just because they're not connecting to the issue, kind of go through at too high a rate. Don't slow down, don't stop, and wave and say, "Oh, hi." They, you know, "Why are there 17, 17 people standing on the corner watching me go through?"
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's, there's no doubt that there's an issue.
And I have a question for the chief. Chief, could we, is there any way that we could have, I, I mean, I know it couldn't be permanent, but is there any way that a police officer could be, could keep an eye on that spot in the morning and in the afternoon if, if, if he or she were not, you know, at another location? And is there anything that we could put there to just draw attention to the fact that this is a crosswalk that children, children cross at, and it's, it's really, really a dangerous spot?
But even like flashing lights, like right now, there's a, there's a sign, like school crossing sign, but even flashing lights that they have, even on Lake Street by the pool, even maybe flashing lights might bring somebody, make, get somebody's attention. Because the problem's not going to go away. I mean, adults have almost been hit, the kids have almost been hit, and people are coming up to me saying, "I heard you're trying to get, you know, something to happen there." So it's a problem, as you know, it's, it's not going to go away. And like you were saying, you're saying that, you know, having a police officer there even just to, and this is something that you actually had run up here in May when we were there, if it becomes known as the part in town that if you're speeding, you're going to get a ticket, or if you're on, on your cellphone, you're going to get a ticket, maybe it, like if it's a trap or something, maybe people will start to slow down. And hey, that would be great, because then maybe they'll see people in the road. And then the other part of that is when you're coming from town, like towards the schools, you literally have to step into the road to see oncoming cars, or for even them to see you. Like, it's a little easier when you're coming from, say, Edgewood Avenue and, and crossing. So I don't know if there's a way to somehow move the crosswalk down just a little bit, like towards closer to town, so it's not like where it kind of turns into Great Oak Lane. So you don't have, because I literally, I, you know, I cross the kids, my kids, and I know my son, they're, they're not going to want me walking them to school, you know, when they're in high school, but I'll do it until they tell me I can't. But literally, I'll walk in, I'll tell them to stay behind me, and I'll kind of look. You know, I don't want to teach them that habit, but right now you kind of have to. So I don't know if there's a way to physically actually move, you know, the lines so that you, you know...
People just don't stop in Pleasantville at crosswalks, whether it's Washington Avenue or where it's Manville. And if we could just be known as the town that you don't, you know, if somebody's standing at a crosswalk, I, I moved here 15 years ago from California, and you don't, if somebody's standing at a crosswalk, you better stop, or you're going to get a ticket. If we could just be known as that, that might, that might help.
Comment, chief?
Thank you.
Okay. Come on up, chief. Shane has to change the tape. We have lathered on for an extended period of this tape.
Is it only 20 minutes to 8, really?
The Yankees haven't...
We gotta keep it that way, so you don't feel bad.
The Yankees haven't lost yet.
The, kind of harken back to what the mayor said earlier when we talk about putting somebody there on a temporary basis. Once we staff a place, we got to continually staff a position. There's a special relationship, it's called, is developed with the community. We put somebody there, that officer gets out of the car and starts to help kids cross. Somebody drives by, or somebody's walking their kids and says, "Oh, tomorrow there'll be a police officer here." They make a decision to send their kids, because they believe a police officer's going to be there. That police officer's not there, because we can't dedicate him to that position. Then we take the liability for somebody getting injured. Plus, you know, there's a, there's a moral responsibility, too, in letting somebody think that there's going to be somebody there to cross your child. So we kind of have to shy away from that particular thing. I like, I like to say that, yeah, I could put a guy there once in a while, but once in a while is not good when it comes to the law or the decisions that parents might make with their children. It's either there or not there. That is the reason why we take this 60-day notice thing very seriously. A number of years ago, we had a traffic post here that was covered by a police officer. Once the traffic light went up, we still had the requirement to put that six, I think we even went 90 days on that one, because of the number of schoolchildren crossing. 60 days is the limit we had to use, but just to give a real election leeway. We took that police officer off, because those walk cycles were then installed and had allowed us to do that. I know I spoke into the board, I spoke into the mayor about it quite often, and Patty, I think that the best solution is going to be when that walk signal, rather, walk cycle that's put in place on Bedford Road and Marble Avenue, then to probably shift that school guard up to that post. The other issue with cell phone, I forgot about cell phone enforcement, I'm sorry, crosswalk enforcement is, we, we, we get a lot of requests for a lot of enforcement. And I'm not saying one's more important to the other and one's less important, it's just, we get inundated with requests on speeding enforcement. One of the things we've handled very well this year, I'm thrilled beyond belief, is truck enforcement. We did get complaints from people about trucks going up and down Bedford Road, trucks and, and children possibly becoming involved in truck versus pedestrian collisions. And we had a lot, we sent officers to truck enforcement schools, so now we have a very vigorous truck enforcement program. As a matter of fact, tonight I was walking my dog before coming to the board meeting, and one of our truck enforcement guys was out there and ended up, you know, taking enforcement action, and I believe he arrested somebody on a truck enforcement issue. Speeding enforcement is one of our big things. We get a, a ton of requests from throughout the village on speeding issues, which tie into schoolchildren also. So we try to rotate our guys around to do a number of different tasks, because we don't have, and no police department I know has the ability to target one specific thing. The next big thing is going, and we do cell phones also, okay? We do have a tenant, we do write a lot of cellphone tickets. The issue with cell phones, though, is, and this comes up, because you, you know, you mentioned somebody driving by and they're on a cellphone. The problem with cell phones, and I, and I, you know, Dr. Ace gets upset about the Wicks Law, I get upset about the fact that the state has removed the points from cellphone tickets. It's, you know, people get a, you know, we live in a, in a, in an area, I guess, where a $150 ticket is some people like, you know, the cost of doing business, unfortunately. So we get a ticket, they get, they pay the fine, and that's it. There's no points, there's no penalty that's going to reflect on insurance or on the driver's license. It's a problem for us, and I'm very upset that the state has taken the points away from cellphone tickets, because now you just get the ticket, pay the fine, and you go on a very white. I tell the story, a number of years ago, one of our officers came in and said, you know, I have an experience where he pulled a person over, walked up to him, the guy was still on the phone, guy handed him, was never even, other than smiled at him, gave him his driver's license and, and insurance card and registration. The officer was, you know, upset beyond belief, goes backwards, takes, comes back, gives it to the guy, and tells the guy, "Hang up, hang up the phone." Guy hangs up the phone call, and he says, "I'll pay the ticket." He says, "I made a whole lot more on this phone call than I will pay on that ticket." So just the cost of doing business. Those are ludicrous things that, you know, we see on a daily basis. So our guys do go after those issues, they do take it, you know, and the next thing is going to be probably crosswalks, so we're going to have to jump on it. California's great. I've been out in California, you know, and, you know, you do cross the street, and, you know, Canada, too. I've been to Canada and almost got rear-ended, my father almost got rear-ended by a guy stopping for, for someone in a crosswalk. So it's unfortunate. We kind of live in this, I guess, the area where we get people who don't really care about that.
What about putting an officer there to, not to cross children, but just for, to have a scar sitting there, like, you know, as, you know, to write tickets for people that are not stopping for the kids?
Right, that's, that's...
We could do that, couldn't we? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to jump on that next time.
Sorry.
My, 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 my problem, we, we did do that. We did have an officer out there right after the, the Bosse's bus incident. And one of the things, the unfortunate things that came out that I heard was, "Oh, now they're going to put a cop there to cross the kids." The officer wasn't there, he was there to do enforcement. I had some people say, you know, "You're going to have, you got an officer there now." And I said, "No, no, you know, we don't have an officer there for that. We have an officer there for another reason, which is to do that enforcement." The problem has been balancing how, how we're going to put that officer there and not have it appear as if he's there to do school crossing traffic. And another thing...
I mean, that seems like a manageable problem.
Well, yeah, that's, that's manageable.
The point is to get, to get the officers in the school areas whenever we possibly can.
Absolutely. And I agree, we can manage that, though we'll work our way around it.
Chief, is there a, and I'll leave those out there, something for the, I mean, I'm interested in the answer, obviously, but for the thought. You, you say that you're, you know, the potential to be able to move crossing guards around based on a timed light. Well, there's other timed lights in the village right now that have crossing guards. So is there something particular about this corner that, that makes that possible to do? Or is that something that we can be considering for all corners that have timed lights now, as well as crossing guards?
The, I, Ms. Tulchin was here earlier. The, the traffic light at Manville and Pleasantville Road is problematic. It's, it's the, the, the problem at that light, and we did look at that a bunch of years ago about pulling that guard and possibly putting him somewhere else. The problem at that light is it's an engineering problem. The roadway is configured in such a way that people think they can make the right turn on red, they do make the right turn on red. The, the, the road has a...
Vertical curve.
Yeah, vertical curve to it. There's, there's a lot of issues there.
I'm talking about Marble and, Marble and Bedford Road, where you were thinking about pulling that crossing guard and being able to move him once that becomes a timed light. Is that, is that what you're talking about?
I think that might be our best bet right now.
But there are other, there are other lights in the village that have timed lights. Why can't we...
A much, yeah. The old village light was the complaint, and that, I, you know, we didn't put that up there. That was, came from on and off.
Well, I think the crossing guard there was before there was a timed light, and now subsequently...
No, no, there was a light there when that crossing guard was there.
But light, it wasn't timed.
No, it was a timed, it was a timer there.
Chief, I could shed some light on it, because it came up in, you know, when we looked at the RBA study, too. It's one of the narrower crossings from Photoworks to the corner, and we're actually bulging out the corner a little bit by the, by the parking lot entrance. So it'll, it'll even be a, less of a distance to cross. And also, this is not a truck route, a formal truck route. Everything on Manville Road with signalization is all on a formal truck route, so the traffic is, is a little more intense.
But where the crossing guard is, is actually not on that side, when I've seen them.
Well, it could be.
The crossing guard's on the other side, where you have the slipway.
Right.
And on the John Jock side, and, you know, now that slipway's, at one point, wasn't going to be there, now it's still going to be there, so...
But the crossing guard...
And I'm not saying you do or you don't move a crossing guard out of the old village, but that's not a, is that a truck route up there?
141 is.
Broadway is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the complaints. I know when I became on a police department, that was a, a post for like a half an hour when you, before you got off duty on a midnight shift. And the problem there was a special relationship problem where we started getting, and I'll say this, you ask any police chief, "What's your busiest time of the year?" It's when school's in session. "What's your busiest time when school's in session, in the morning and the afternoon?" Because traffic is heavy, there's a lot of traffic movement. So unfortunately, that post became problematic because we would get calls that required two officers to respond, typically auto accidents or, one of the things is people wake up in the morning and sometimes they're having chest pains or sometimes, you know, there's all kinds of issues that happen, for whatever reason, they happen in the morning, okay? House alarms go off, fire alarms. We didn't have that flexibility. So that officer then got replaced by a school crossing guard. That was about 28, 29 years, and I've been on a job for 30 years now, my 30th year. So that was my first year on a job, that was what we did. Then the school crossing guard came in. But that traffic light at the time still had a manual walk button, because I remember pushing it to let kids cross, because you still use that to show the kids that this is the way to do it. One of the problems always, and we're talking about staffing these things on a full-time basis, we have 10 school crossing posts now. One of my concerns is we're going into a period of time where, you know, we're talking about like this H1N1 issue. Where we're talking about, what are we going to do if we have a reduced staff? How are we going to handle our, our volume of calls and our workload? If we start losing school crossing guards, we're going to be in a point, if they call out sick and we're short police officers, we're going to be in a point where we're really hurting, hurting to cover posts, okay? I have no problem, I've done school crossing posts, okay? I'll just throw on a vest or my suit if I'm wearing a suit, or I'll throw on, you know, my uniform coat and go out. I don't mind going out and working, all right? It's bad, though, when we get to bringing me out in the street to do that stuff because that means there's no reserve there. If we lose a lot of police officers...
Just wait till you start using the trustees.
You know what? You may be a school board.
I want to cross the Dave McCullough's corner, wherever it is.
You've got a good corner there, yes. Nice, nice and peaceful. But, you know, those are issues that we have to look at, too. So when we talk about expanding numbers of people, we also have to look at, what do we do when these guys start calling out? Because we do, it is, it is a tough job in the winter, and if they get sick, we have to fill it with police officers. So we're kind of like trying to balance manpower needs or, or people power needs, I guess is the more appropriate term, and it becomes a problem. But, you know, certainly the cellphone ish, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the crosswalk issue is something we've targeted in the past couple of weeks. We've actually been doing some stand-up enforcement down here by the, by the Bosse office. That's after like 8:00, 8:30, okay, when it starts to calm down a little bit. Next step is I'll talk to my patrol commander and we'll start working on, on that particular intersection. Whether we may even be able to throw, if possible, a hundred mark car there or... It's too cold now with the bike and motorcycles and the technical tools, so... But I got a prompt ticket because I, I walk. I'm a, I'm a pedestrian, I walk, I walk my dog, I walk myself, you know, I don't like it anymore than anybody else, and I'm conducting traffic stops off duty, which is a bad thing to do sometimes. When I'm in the intersection. I had a guy almost run me down the other night and then start yelling at me because I wasn't dressed to light enough clothes. I had a light tan jacket on and light tan catty pants, and he goes, "See you." But any of that...
Thank you, chief. I think Minnie Barard had called in and had something she wanted to say. Are you ready to speak? All right, hold on a second. Trustee Minnie Barard is not with us tonight because she's sick. She threatened to come and we encouraged her not to share that which she has with the rest of us. She's here telephonically.
Well, it's about time you recognized me. I felt like you jumped into my seat so quickly over there, Jonathan. But I, you know, I wanted to know that this is the first meeting I've ever missed to boot, but...
Patty, can we have a gold star?
But I did it out of benefit of all of you, but I apologize, I do apologize. Of missing any meeting, I would not want to miss this one. But I did want to, I know we touched on previously on the fields and things, and I wanted to thank Tom and Bill for all their hard work together with Mike Gilfeather and I on the, working out the whole fields and issues and things, and they've been wonderful to work with. And we've reached some good goals that we set initially and look forward to continuing that work with them. And also with John Brolin, he was, when he was new, he took the time to meet with Steve Johnson and I and walk the fields, and we got to cry on his shoulder a little bit on all of our problems that we have, and he was a great partner with a lot of great suggestions, and we look forward to working with him further on that, too. But I, I just wanted to give a shout out to those guys that, it was so nice to work with them, and I look forward to continuing to work with them.
Thank you, Minnie.
Thank you, Minnie.
You're welcome. And the Broncos are beating the Chargers if anybody's interested.
All right, we'll take a poll on the level of interest. Thank you, Phil Beattie.
Hello, Helen Muir, 3 Haythill Road. I think we've got a theme going on here. I went to a Safe Roots to School conference on Friday morning at the Westchester County Center. It was sponsored by Westchester County Government, and people from Albany came down. And we had got some interesting information, only a little bit of what I'll share because it was about three and a half hours. The Ry School District had their YMCA sponsor Safe Roots to School, and they came out with these bumper stickers. I don't know if you can see that, Shane. It says, "Caution, I stop at crosswalks." I think we all need one of these on our car. Saying "car," so people understand.
Are those available or are they selling them?
Um, I can find out. I mean, it actually says, "Sponsored by the Ry YMCA and Safe Roots to School," but I imagine the Safe Roots to School program...
We can make that happen in Pleasantville.
Yep.
It's great.
They also had a wonderful pledge. They actually direct mailed the school, I think it was all the families who have schoolchildren, but as Lisa Hickey was reminding me, it's not just parents who are driving around speeding and talking on cellphones, but other people, too. But they came out with a safe driving pledge for parents and a safety pledge for students. And some of the things they include on this for the parents are, never talk or text on a phone whilst driving, always stop for pedestrians and bikers in crosswalks, don't drop your children off by a double parked car, and so on. And on the student's side, follow the traffic signals, don't talk on the cellphone while you're crossing the crosswalk, always wear a helmet when you're riding a bike. And the interesting thing about this is it's self-policing because you'll have a kid in the back of your car and your child will be saying to you, "But Mom, you're not supposed to be on the cellphone, you promised, and it's against the law." You know, it's got this whining noise going on, so you're not going to do it. It's a good reminder. Anyway, they have a nice program, they're one of several districts. And what I got out of this conference was that there are many districts around us just like us, several, like Larchmont, that don't have school buses. And I think what we need is a small group of interested citizens consisting of somebody from the police force, somebody from the school, somebody from the village board, and parents, and anyone else who wants to join, and get together and make this happen, make a Safe Roots to School program in Pleasantville on a serious level. We would end up with less people driving, we'd have less traffic, we'd get more people walking and more people bicycling. And one thing I just thought of while we're sitting here, you know, school crossing guards after school could echo the school program, could high school students be registered to do, to cross children? I don't know if they're old enough at 17 or 18 to help people cross the road, but certainly not before school because they're busy, but at 2:30, so... Anything like that, we could throw ideas around, but we could actually move forward because we have lots of disparate groups coming to these meetings and saying, "We need a footpath," or, "We need safer crossing." And I think we just all should make it happen. And I have lots of information which I could share with, I don't know who, I only took two copies of everything, but...
Well, if you could give one set to Patty, she could get copies of it to all of us and then have it as a resource to the village. I think the bumper stickers are a no-brainer right off the bat, we should make that happen.
Yeah, they, the woman who had this was actually one of the directors of the YMCA who had these made, Helen Bates, she's called. And she, she said, well, actually, she feels very responsible when she has it in the back of the car because she thinks people are reading it, and if she doesn't stop at a crosswalk, she'll get beat at, so...
See, that is, this is many layers of societal enforcement, so...
Okay.
Having your kids enforce it on parents is great. I have never forgotten the three-year-old nursery school party when I'm putting my cream cheese on my bagel and this three-year-old says to me, "You know what cream cheese is?" I say, "No." She says, "Empty calories." And I think that every time I get...